Welcome everyone to the December 12th City Council Work Session. This is another work session on our coordinated downtown development. City Manager?
Thanks Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Sarah and Christine.
Good evening. Sarah Medary, Assistant City Manager. Pleased to be back here tonight as we roll into our last couple of work sessions and meetings with City Council this year in 2016. We're just going to talk a little bit about our agenda for tonight and also for Wednesday afternoon. So tonight, kind of how we thought about breaking these two meetings up is that both Monday and Wednesday would be a period of time for information and then a period of time for discussion. So for tonight, what we know that you wanted additional information on was closer apples-to-apples comparison of the E-Web building and some more analysis of E-Web. You've asked for some information on leasing and we're talking about leasing in the downtown. Talk briefly about some of the costs and funding and ways to fund that. And then it's possible that based on those conversations before you go into your deliberations that we will have a brief executive session to just talk about some of the negotiation items and then discussion of scenarios. So if you have more information questions that come up tonight, we'll reserve the first part of the meeting on Wednesday to try to answer those questions. And if not, then all of Wednesday could be discussion of the different scenarios for City Hall and a possible selection. That's what we're hoping that we've provided enough information to get you to. So just as a reminder for the public as well, we have tonight's meeting from 5:30 to 7:00. Tomorrow night from 4:30 to 6:00, we're having a joint open house in the atrium building. And this will be one more opportunity for the public to comment on the three scenarios we worked on in collaboration with the county in addition to the fourth scenario of the E-Web. And we'll have all four there and opportunities for people to meet with us on the project team and learn more about those. And we'll turn around what we learned from that and bring it to you on Wednesday. And then Wednesday morning, prior to your meeting, the Board of County Commissioners has also added a meeting to talk about the different scenarios. It's possible that they could be in a similar position as you where they may be discussing and selecting their preferred scenario or not. I'm not certain how that's going to go. And then we have your final meeting to do that. So we're just going to jump right into the information piece now and I'm going to shift this presentation over to Jim Robertson of Robertson Sherwood Architects to talk about the E-Web piece. Beth, we just need to start that other.
I appreciate being here. At your December 5th work session, you asked if we could go back and provide some additional information for an option that limits the initial renovation occupancy of the E-Web headquarters building to the same 25,000 gross square feet that's anticipated as part of the initial full build-out of the Phase 1 City Hall as planned. And so the report that you have in front of you in your materials is a summary of the information that hopefully answers the questions you have related to that. But I thought I'd go through and give you some highlights of what you should find in there. A little bit of background, this is in the original report that we did for you, but it's a summary of the square footages available within that headquarters building. It's a total of 99,914 gross square feet. So obviously, it's large enough to accommodate the initial Phase 1. What's interesting, if you look at the individual floors and the square footages available, we looked at those in order to evaluate, okay, how best could you potentially occupy some portion of the building while leaving the rest of it unused for the time being? And so you'll see that in the south building, we've got a first floor of 25,299 square feet. Well, that's pretty close to what you need for your Phase 1 City Hall. It's also on the ground floor, which makes it readily accessible to the public. You don't have to go upstairs. And it would actually be fairly envisioned fairly easily of cordoning off the upper floors and have public access, staff access primarily at that ground floor level. You can see that you would only be occupying about 25% of the available square footage. Now, in our original report, we were under the assumption that E-Web would continue to operate out of the fourth floor of the south building for the foreseeable future. Information that we got over the weekend would seem to suggest that they might be able to be out of there by the end of 2018, which does modify somewhat some of the conclusions that we drew in a previous study. So the concept that we looked at in more detail for you assumes that we would just occupy that ground floor of the south building that we would take. It's exactly, as I said, basically what you need for your Phase 1. The upper floors, the bridge, and the north building would be cordoned off and secured so that it wouldn't have any public access. The fourth floor could continue to be used by E-Web and conceivably, you could have other tenants in the building as well. But depending on whether E-Web stays longer or shorter, that's still possible under this scenario. So the idea is that we would limit the new work to that ground floor. And what we're considering is a new HVAC system that would serve that, which we're going to give you some options for how you might address that. There's the potential for doing envelope improvements on just the first floor area that's occupied and that we would do electrical low voltage upgrades like that as part of that renovation project. Now, the scope of the HVAC system, some things that won't be included in this, anticipated in this minimum build-out would be none of the voluntary seismic improvements that you might want to do, though you could still do those if you wanted to, but it's not included in this. And then we're assuming that we wouldn't be doing any extensive site work, that we'd basically use the 174 parking spaces that were there, we'd use the accessible spaces, and just basically limit the amount of initial development and expense that you would have. There are some things that we would not be able to meet as part of this project. One is your stated goal of trying to reach an EUI of 30 and also being able to meet lead silver as a base and lead gold as a preferred option. The issue here is that you're only going to be operating, only going to be modifying 25% of the building, so it's, there isn't really a good lead category for us to fall into in order to get the project lead certified. At some point in time in the future, you could, but this initial one would be limited to potentially lead operational certification that you could do for the area that you are using. So I want to go back. In terms of the HVAC system, E-Web sent out some information this past weekend talking that described what they were intending to do as part of their future build-out or upgrade of the building. And they described some improvements to the HVAC system. Their assumptions of the material that they sent to us was a little different than our assumptions. I wanted to point those out to you. One is that we are recommending that we go to a chilled beam system that would be more energy efficient than the system that's in there now. We can use some of the good components of the system, but we basically would change it over to be a chilled beam. Right now, it uses a bunch of decentralized fan coil units and it's operating on what's called a variable refrigerant flow system. That's what E-Web is proposing as part of the upgrades that they're doing. When we talked initially in our evaluation to facilities about the kind of system that they would like to see in this building in the end, it was the chilled beam system that we were recommending. The variable refrigerant system is a good system, but it's going to have a more limited lifespan than the one that we're proposing. It has a little bit ongoing operational maintenance expenses. And then it's a hard system to apply to large meeting space kinds of spaces because it uses all these little fan coil units. And it would be a little bit limited to be able to do all of the kinds of uses that you're talking about in the building with that system. And so our budgets and recommendations were based on going to the chilled beam system. And in our report, we outline what would be involved in doing that. We would basically leave the existing central plant in place. We would replace a couple of fan coil units. And then we would use the existing ductwork, but then we installed the new chilled beam components in all of the renovated first floor. And so that's a system that as over time, you could go to the second floor, do the same thing, the third floor, do the same thing, and ultimately, the fourth floor and do that. So that could happen in a piecemeal fashion over time. We're also giving you an option for changing out the main central plant units. That would be more energy efficient units and it would be a way for us to start getting back closer to the EUI that you have as a goal. So by doing the various components of whether we change the central plant, whether we do some of the exterior envelope improvements, the EUI of the building is going to range somewhere between 45 and 68, depending on the level of improvements you make. So you occupy Phase 1 and you've got all of this square footage that's been sectioned off or been leased out to somebody else or been continued to be operated by E-Web. When it comes time to Phase 2, in this scenario, you're ending up to renovating the remaining 74,000 square feet of space that's in those upper floors of the south building, the entire north building. And then you're going to be 67,000 square feet short of meeting the 167,000 square-foot goal that you originally had for Phase 1 and Phase 2. So in this scenario, you end up doing more renovation than what we had anticipated as part of our Phase 1 plus option that we gave you in the initial report. But you're going to limit the cost of Phase 1, but you'd end up doing more renovation in this scenario. And then you're ending up building the same square footage of new construction in order to meet your goal. Our cost estimates for this scenario would be the direct construction cost of $7 million. Owner cost at 35% of that direct construction or $2.4 million. We've escalated the cost to 2020 based on what E-Web initially said that they would be in terms of a move-out. They've since, over the weekend, indicated they could be potentially out by the end of 2018. That would save you a year of escalation on this, would save you about $450,000 in our estimates. So the total cost of doing this Phase 1 is $10.4 million and that would give you the EUI of 50. This does not replace the central plant. If we look at the option for replacing the central plant, the cost would go up to $12.7 million. It'd be an investment into the future for the long-term health of the building and that would result in an EUI of 45. So the Phase 2 project for in $2,027 is estimated at $115,200, $115,200,000. There was also a question about utility costs. And so we asked Systems West engineers, our consultants, to make some calculations based on the three EUIs that are addressed in the report, the 45, the 50, and the 78. And you can see that there is not significant change in the overall cost of utilities in the building based on just looking at the EUI. And you'll also note, if you compare these numbers with the numbers that you're going to see of the utility costs for the currently planned Phase 1 City Hall, you'll notice that those are a little bit higher than these numbers, though these are only operating 100% at the ground floor. But we're still putting some energy in the building because we need to ventilate and do some basic heating of all of the unused space just to make sure we don't get any mold or, and that we don't get any deterioration of the materials. And so there is some operational cost even though you are, you know, sort of mothballing those areas over time. But I think you'll find that these numbers are a little bit less. And primarily, that is that the EUI really is not looking at everything associated with the cost of operations in that your existing city hall design is using your geothermal wells and it's really electricity-based for its energy costs. E-Web building is gas-based and right now, electricity, I understand, is three times more expensive than gas. And so when you put that factor it in there, that's why these numbers, even though your new building is an EUI of 30 and this building is going to be something greater than that, operationally, this still is, you know, less money to operate. Doesn't get you to your goals of net zero on your carbon, but from operational costs, this would be a little bit less expensive. So on your headquarters, on this option, some things that I'd like to just suggest for you to consider in some of our findings, the building is compatible for the intended use that you want to put in there. It wouldn't require a change of occupancy. Consider that the city would be purchasing a 20-year, 28-year-old building and the HVAC system is near its useful life. The city could occupy only 25% of the building, but that really is only, you know, 25% of the whole thing in that potentially, you could lease out as E-Web has over time, that unused space. The initial Phase 1 construction costs, not including acquisition, which we have no idea what that cost will be, would be less than a new building option. It provides space for 74,000 square feet of Phase 2 functions sometime in the future. Point out that it's not likely to be able to meet all of the city's sustainability goals of the 30 EUI. An EUI of 45 may be possible if the upgrades were complete as we recommend. Ongoing operational costs may be higher than a new building when you factor in everything and not just energy costs. You'd be limited on the lead programs that you might be able to pursue. And then you're also going to need to live within some of the constraints of the existing building. And I think the biggest constraint is dealing with where to place the council chambers because the existing council chambers that's designed has a, is 40 feet wide and it has a 20-foot-high ceiling. But we don't have any space within the existing building of E-Web that's 40 feet wide, clear column-to-column spacing. We also don't have any space in that building other than the atrium that has a ceiling anywhere close to 20 feet. And so in our report, we give you the range of what the existing ceilings are. So that would, if you go this route, it would be the city council chamber is something that would need to be thought about and you might need to think about it differently than you're accustomed to in terms of broad space and tall ceilings. There are, you know, a good design firm probably could help you with that. And then I'll just point out again that the elective upgrading of the seismic constraints of the building would be more cost than what's included in our analysis. It was included in our original analysis in our report, but it was looking at the more extensive than just a Phase 1 occupancy. Want to open it up for any questions you might have?
Mike in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have several questions. I'll want around two, I'll say it again probably when I get done. If we could go back to that previous slide there, as you can see the rounded face of the north building as it faces the river there. The windows for the interior enclosure of the second floor of the north building run roughly, as I look at that, from point corner to point corner, right? That interior wall of the second floor. And so my question is, when you had the 6,700 square feet here of the second floor, did you measure the balcony space?
In terms of useful space, no.
Okay. Would you have off the top of your head at the moment any estimation of the square footage of that balcony on the second floor?
We can have somebody look at that one.
That would be great, yeah. My point is, it's not quite double it, it's not.
No.
But it's pretty close. It's very, very large. In a tour the other day, several of the E-Web folks, commissioners and some of their folks and I were talking about this, about how they'd had a study done on this, that you could take out that interior wall and because there's concrete on the top and the bottom of that balcony space on the second floor, put windows around the interior face of that between the concrete and essentially expand that whole space to almost double for a council chamber on the second floor of that, of the north building. And because it's a false ceiling and it goes up several feet above where the false ceiling has it, that you can open that space and then create stadium seating in the back of that area on the second floor to create what would be a serviceable council chamber. And so I just, I would like to have somebody, for my sake anyway, look into what the capacity would be there, both square footage and people that could occupy that space if such a thing were done. I have several here. Number two, what did E-Web spend a million and a half dollars on the HVAC system to do last year in 2015?
I can tell you that.
While he's looking that up, are you asking us to just tell you what the square foot capacity is of the balcony or whether it's possible and what the cost would be?
Let me put it this way, having been through there with several folks who do this for a living, I know that it's possible already. So I suppose what I'm asking is what would the total square footage produce? And as a, if it were all enclosed in that fashion, what would an estimation of the occupancy be, especially if you raised the ceiling and put stadium seating in the back for the audience? My question about the HVAC is because the folks at E-Web had a very different response from our presentation the other day. One of the things that I heard was their estimation to get to an EUI of 47 of $3 million. And my understanding of their expertise at E-Web is that measuring energy efficiency in buildings is something they're pretty good at. So I'm wondering why the disparity. I'm wondering, is this an analysis you guys did or did you hire somebody else to do the energy efficiency part or?
Yeah, well, we hired Systems West engineers to do the analysis for us. And I can tell you, at the beginning of our analysis, we asked E-Web for a whole bunch of information to help us with our evaluation. And a lot of that really wasn't forthcoming, I'm sorry to say. And so we basically had, as I mentioned, a very short period of time to do our analysis. And so we tried to do it from the 30,000-foot level in terms of not trying to get too far into the weeds. Although some of these calculations are really, you have to make a lot of professional judgments. I think if you go to almost anybody, any two firms and ask them to calculate an EUI, you're going to get a different number because there is some professional judgments involved in that. And actually, E-Web probably has access to better information about their building than we were given. So we had to make a lot of assumptions. In fact, the set of drawings that we used were ones that, we had somebody from our office that was part of the original design team. And so he happened to have a set at home. So, but they weren't as-built drawings, they were, you know, drawings that were done prior to construction. So whether or not there were changes made or anything like that, and we didn't have information about any remodels or upgrading, upgrades that E-Web had done. We did have a list from them in terms of things that they had given the city a couple of years ago when you were considering this option, of things that were on their master list of improvements that they needed to do and things that they had checked off. We provided that to our engineers and when they did the walkthrough of the building, they sort of verified that. Our assumptions were anything that was more recently replaced by E-Web and they did do some replacements, we were going to leave that. They did put a new roof on the building, they put new insulation on the roof. None of our numbers will include new roofing or any of that. They were looking at doing improvements to the exterior envelope, but the payback on those from their standpoint are so slim that it doesn't make sense because they're not operating under the same goal of trying to reach the EUI 30 that you are. And so they're looking at the bang for the buck. And so they're, they're looking at the bang for the buck. You know, what can we do to get as, as much energy efficiency with a reasonable amount of cost?
On the HVAC?
Then I'll see if I can...
Put me in the second round, that would be good too, but I, I just, if I could extend just for half a second to say, my understanding from EWEB is they spent a million and a half dollars on the HVAC system last year to improve it pretty dramatically. So I, I don't underst, I'd like to have that reconciled.
Okay, we were told that they've done, in, in 2013, they went and re-cocked the window system. In order to, for us to get it at, closer to your EUI goal, we were assuming replacing windows. Those are already dual-pane windows in there. To get anywhere close to your number, we have to go to triple-pane windows. They replaced the roof in 2011. They had planned in 2016 and 17 to do elevator cab upgrades, but that was just to the cabs, not to the actual elevator systems. They did install a new gas-fired condensing boiler in 2012. They rebuilt and replaced the existing water pumps in 2015. They replaced valves, controls, and the, and they rebalanced the system this past year. They did replace an air handler, and they updated the building control system. They marked that, that they, it was planned to be done, but they had indicated us it was 2017, 2018 budget, so.
One last sentence.
Go to the second round.
Okay, this paragraph, right here.
Oh, anybody else? It might come really quick, yes.
Yeah, so for, I saw EWEB's letter about moving out the administrative functions by the end of 2017. Do they, does that require them to build a new building or facilities at Roosevelt site, or they can move into what they have existing and not have to build anything new?
I don't have all the details on that, but I, I assume that they are mostly moving into existing space.
So it makes it more doable. So I've got $10.4 million to move in, plus acquisition, which we've heard, 11 to 15 million, so we're at 21 to 25 million. Now we've got to add in construction cost of council chambers, probably a million to 2 million. And then what's the, the cost of seismic and how, that's not, is that something that could be phased, or is that something you'd have to do to the whole building at the same time?
You don't have to do it all at the same time. But what makes sense is if you are going to be, as I say, occupying the first floor of the south building, that would be the time to do all the improvements of the floor above, because you can have access underneath to all of the major connections. And that's really what the seismic report that Hobak Lewin did for us, again, was, was a, a broad report, just looking basically at the drawings that they had available to them, and then walking through the building. But they identified a number, I think 36 connections in the building, that they would recommend be upgraded, if you wanted to make the building meet a higher level of seismic restraint. And so doing the repairs on the, on the second floor while you're renovating the first floor would make sense. First floor is sitting on piling, and so they're really short of, of excavating and getting in and doing something with those piles, which I wouldn't recommend that you do. I would just stay with the first floor and work your way up.
How do you secure the first floor when you've got three floors above it? I don't, I don't understand. What, don't you get the pancaking effect of a building, or, and, so, don't you need to do all of the structure?
Well, to meet your end goal, you'd want to do all of them. But if you can't afford to do all of them, then doing them in a, in a phased fashion that makes sense seems to, to be a viable approach.
But, and, and the $3 million was all of it? That was what it cost to do all of it. And then you guys also had in your report a bunch of exterior envelope upgrades, other than the windows that we talked about. What about the concrete panels and the caulking and all the other things that, the seals? You could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, what we had recommended in this latest report is that if you just do the first floor, that you go ahead and do the, any of the envelope improvements you want to do. So that would be the time to replace the windows, that would be the time to reseal all the joints on the outside. And that would be the point where you'd want to take off the interior wall finishes and upgrade the, the, the thermal insulation that's there, so you can get, get a greater thermal envelope before you put your new finishes on. So that's what we've assumed in the envelope improvements.
That's in the $7 million construction cost?
Yes.
That's already included. And what about lighting, is that also?
That's also included of going with a new control system on the first floor, and going with LED lighting in the first floor. The assumption is that you end up getting your control system the way you want it, and then you just add to it as you, as you renovate the rest of the building.
Okay, thanks.
And you, you made a comment about the money to rebuild the council chambers.
Oh, yeah. How much would that cost?
Our assumption on the budget was that we're, we're renovating the full 20, full first floor of 25,000 gross square feet. So there's numbers applied, and, and the council chambers was included in that 25,000 square feet. So if you decided that you would want to pursue, say, using the north building for the council chambers, then potentially you wouldn't have to do as much of the first floor renovation as we had anticipated. You'd take that budget and put it towards the north building.
Okay. And if you did use the first floor of the south building, where would you put the council chambers? There's no space even close to, to have a council chambers.
Yeah, that's what I commented, is going to be one of the constraints and challenges to just using the first floor, is that you can't get a 40-foot-wide space if you, if that was important to you, or the 20-foot-high space. And has been pointed out, to get that even in the north building requires you to demo something.
Yeah. And what's this space?
Tall.
16.
This is 16, okay.
To the, to the, just above the wood.
Yeah, so we squeeze in the council chambers somewhere in the first floor? Is that what, what I'm hearing?
Or I think the, the other option that we pointed out in the report is potentially, the highest ceiling space in the building right now is the fourth floor where EWEB has their distribution. That's got a 15-foot-high ceiling. So, and it also, on that end of the building, has the widest spacing of columns, too. So potentially, if they're going to move out, maybe you take, instead of putting it in the north building, you put the council chambers as a express elevator ride up to the fourth floor, and that's where you operate there.
Yeah, I'm not exactly excited about if council chambers on the fourth floor. I think it makes it inaccessible if the elevators went out. Okay, thanks.
I've got George Brown, and then Chris.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, and probably more directed to city staff, about this sheet here, which I'm really glad, thank you very much for providing this, I've been itching to get my hands on it, it makes it all, it's all kind of unified on one, one sheet of paper. Whereas we, I think we've probably received some of this information in the past, but it was kind of like in different packets, and it was kind of hard to assemble all on one sheet. So thank you for that. My question is, I'm sure I'll have more later, but my initial one is, I'm looking over on the right side, and, and it says at the top of this column where it shows the different fiscal years, annual lease slash facilities cost. And then I go over and I look at the sites that we're actually leasing from, you know, third parties, like the Woolworth Building, and the Roberts Building, and Parkview Place, and Wells Fargo. Those are leases, that's straightforward. But then I see a city-owned property, and, and there's charges on the, in, is that more for, like, utilities and facilities cost?
We're actually going to walk through this in the next portion of the presentation.
Oh, are you? Okay, great.
So as soon as, when we're done with the questions with Jim, we're going to show some aerial photos and, and walk through these prices a little bit, and we'll explain that.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll wait till after that, and for the rest. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you for this information on EWEB. I actually had the opportunity to tour the building for a second time, a couple of weeks ago. And one of my primary interests, and I'll be very upfront about it, is if you're going to build a city hall, one of the principal uses of a city hall is the public meeting space, where the council meets and you conduct the city's business. So that's a, that's a primary interest to me, is council, council chambers. And so I had an opportunity, when I toured the building, to talk with the EWEB folks about potential places where you could do a council chamber. And in my earlier tour, a couple of years ago, I was intrigued with the cafeteria, because that was a sufficiently large space where you could have done a council chamber. But they have since leased that to the manufacturing company and, and divided it all up, and lowered the ceiling, it's true, but they've also put up walls, partitions, manufacturing spaces, so they really kind of filled that in. The area that Council Clark was talking about, the outside balcony, is kind of a long crescent, which means if you just filled it in, it by itself wouldn't make a council space, because whoever was sitting in the back would be around a corner from wherever the business is going on otherwise. So it would have to be incorporated into a larger construction. You'd have to essentially recover the old cafeteria space, tear all of that out. And so that gets to the question of what would that cost be, to not only fill in the balcony, but tear out all of the current construction, and then to provide access, it would be on the second floor. So you would have to ensure a, a good, robust access system to the second floor. Which leads me to the second part, was I also did tour the fourth floor. And the room that you're talking about could absolutely work as a council chamber. It's, it's quite large, and could hold a substantial amount of people. It has a tall enough ceiling and a large enough scale that it could work. And that's why I was really intrigued to see the letter from Frank Lawson, because the earlier conversation had been that would not be vacated for eight years. And eight years is, that's a heck of a long time. But if they could do it in two years, that actually does make it more viable. In fact, I think in terms of cost per cost, converting the fourth floor would definitely be quicker, easier, and less expensive than trying to monkey around with the former cafeteria space and fill in balconies and tear out infrastructure and stuff. So I would be interested in cost comparisons for those two things, including whatever elevators or transport systems would be necessary to easily and conveniently get people to the fourth floor. And while the fourth floor is not the ideal solution, if you visit the city hall in, say, Kakagawa, Japan, which I have just happened to be able to visit, their council chambers up on the top floor of their city hall. So it is something that is not unprecedented. So I would be interested in knowing the new timeline, what something like that might involve in cost.
Mike, you're up, and then I think if something else comes up, we're ready to go to the next portion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Lead certification process, this is something that, and, well, actually, let me go back and finish what I had left there at the end. Very last paragraph of this two-pager from EWEB references what I mentioned, where it says, "Lastly, future HVAC work is minimal when compared to what has been completed to date." That's where they reference the work that they did last year. And they may not have provided all the details of that to you, but I, as I, I wanted to make sure that we're actually talking, but when we, when we're talking about cost estimates to change the HVAC system, I want to make sure that it's something they haven't already done.
Right. And I think that we did factor that into the numbers that we did. Keep in mind that though, their assumption is a different kind of mechanical system than what we're recommending and what the budget was based on.
If theirs is brand-new, why would we want to have a new one?
Good, because there's only portions of their system that's brand-new. And their distribution system and their, and the components that make up that were not part of any, any major renovation. They're still using some old components that are 28-years-old.
I would want to have more information about that, I suppose, than I have or we have time for at the moment. Lead certification that you mentioned is possible over time, based on the square footage and the initial thing. That, that, that's an important value for the community, and I, and I would want to say that there's a significant difference here in perhaps the information they gave you initially in your assessments, based on what their folks did with the EUI analysis. What I saw from them said an EUI of 47 for, as I mentioned, about $3 million. So if we did the list of things that were included here on this front page of the EWEB for, for the 3 million, how would that affect lead certification?
One thing I point out is that the energy efficiency of the building is only one component of the, the metric that you comply with in order to get lead certification. And the kind of lead certification that you want to go for is sort of dictated by the points that you're going to chase to get certification. So if you were going in and completely renovating the entire building, and going to occupy the entire building, then you could go in using the, the typical lead new building or renovation lead program and follow that.
Protocol.
Protocol. When you're only going to renovate 25% of the building, then according to the folks that, that are lead certified in our office, it makes it more difficult to be able to follow the prescribed method in order to achieve the certification. The only two programs that, that we thought potentially were applicable to you in a partial occupancy was a system for interior design and construction, or potentially for an operations and maintenance of existing buildings. Those are two programs that you could, if you want, if you're just trying to get the lead certification, then you could pursue those.
So let me try and put that in a different phrasing, if I could. It seems we'd have close to, we could, we could, over time, rather than all at once, over even a year or two, we could do all of the work that, under a do-it-all-at-once scenario, would create a lead certification, because the work would be done and the efficiency would be there, but it's the certification program and their lack of a pro, a, a protocol or a standard for doing that that would keep us from getting it, not the actual doing the work.
And there's nothing to prevent you from following all of the guidelines for lead. You just would not be able to get the certificate to hang on the wall.
But we could make it work as if it were.
You could make it work.
That's what I was looking for.
The University of Oregon used to do that a lot. They didn't, they didn't want the certification, but they wanted us to design to lead Silver Standard.
Mm-hmm. Okay, one other question in that. I can't recall it easily, so I'll pass.
I think we're ready now to go into the leasing information.
Sure, thanks. So Christie and I are going to work through this together, and you'll want to have your big spreadsheet. We also have some color copies at your table, but it'll be easier to kind of follow on the, on the larger screen, especially for those that are at home. I'm taking John's. So I'm going to, these are all the sites in downtown Eugene that we either lease or own, and I, I'm calling it city lease spaces, because that's how we've just been referring it, but some of these, we, we have some ownership in. So starting from the left, right here, is Central Services Municipal Court. This is the building that we had remodeled for municipal court services. It's 18,000 square feet. Our lease goes until 2021. And as you look at the numbers, and I'm sure Christie can explain in more detail, but you look at the numbers, they're high and they drop, it's because all of the tenant improvements that were put in to remodel it to a court are included in those, those early years of the lease cost. As you move up to Eugene Public Library, we have it green, because the fourth floor of the library includes the services that you see in the two dark gray lines, the Central Services Admin and Finance, and also Information Services. And this one, I think, is a, a good place to talk about the lease rates that Council Brown raised. So in this one, we show about $150,000 worth of, of costs that we pay on that space. That's not necessarily money that can go if we free it up, because we still own the library, we still have to operate it and maintain it. So there's a lot of things that go into lease rates. If you're, if you're a private owner and you're, you're leasing out buildings, they will calculate in their financing costs, utility costs, often, not always, sometimes they do different kinds of leases, but regular maintenance, like custodial, they're also factoring in a number to save up for major maintenance, like replacing roofs and HVACs. So there's, there's a lot of things that go in, and each one of our sites that we're leasing from calculates that in a little bit of a different way. But in this case of our fourth floor, these are our operation and maintenance costs. So that includes custodial, saving for major maintenance. So if the library expands into that fourth floor space, and I think that's something we all are hoping will happen, they will need to pick up that cost. So it's not an actual free and clear money to the city, because we, we still have to pay that. As you move up... As you move up, we have the Eugene Atrium Building. This is a city-owned property. This is, there's a lot of services in there besides planning and development. We have some public works engineering. We recently have cultural services admin staff moved in there. The human rights neighborhood involvement team is in there, and we have some private tenants as well. You kind of keep moving up. This is the floor, second floor of the newly constructed Woolworth Building is where our human resources and res services are. You see them on the list. Now, that's one where, when you look down, the lease rates between the two of them are about $250,000 a year. That is actually money that, at least a good portion of that could follow to another new location for operation and maintenance of another location. Jump in if you think I'm off. We keep going up. This is the Wells Fargo Building. We, we're in the third and fourth floor here with Public Works Engineering. And then across the street, we have a portion of the fourth floor of the Park Place Building. Is that what it's called?
Yes.
And that's Public Works Administration. And then you see, as we jump over to the PSB, we have the area that the city manager's office, council offices, city attorney's offices in. And then we were showing our city hall lot potential scenario, these are the potential scenarios, right? We're either here, or here, or possibly here. So that's kind of, we wanted to just be able to show that. And then we, because you've talked about the other scenarios a little bit more, we wanted to show potentially what could happen with a Phase 1 or Phase 1 Plus at the E-Web site, just as an example. So the first, first 25,000 square feet, if that's the apples-to-apples that we were just discussing, we would, you'll see that now the green has been, we've put a little happy smiley face, where the city manager's office has moved over to the E-Web building, and so has a small corner of the atrium building. But the rest of these would still, would still be here in that 25,000 scenario. And then if you continued and you expanded into the rest of the available square foot, this is a scenario that could potentially happen. We would vacate the fourth floor of the library and move finance, central services, ISD. We would also potentially, we would move HR and RIS, that would be a natural piece to go in with central services, but as you see on here, that would, some of these are just a little bit farther out, because the leases go till 2022, I think, on that particular one. And then, yep, so those are the four. Those four would migrate over there, and we would still have Public Works and PDD and Municipal Court in the downtown. Unless we do the next piece, which would be to build this building, I didn't go to all that detail, because I wasn't sure how much you wanted to go into before just discussing. If you build the second building, then you could potentially move the rest of the services all the way over to the headquarters site. So do you want to stop and talk about the leases for a minute?
If anybody has questions or comments, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I wondered how we would, from our previous subcommittee work of several years ago, we had several of those kind of blocks broken up and talked about, well, if we had this much space, we could move this one here or that one there. So to see it in this way, it makes it easier to understand, and I appreciate that. Knowing that it doesn't, it may not necessarily be in 25,000 square foot blocks, per se, that the E-Web's building becomes available. It may be in some combination of that, depending on how it goes. And so we have at least a good chunk, other than Municipal Court, and I suppose some of the atrium there, too, that I see. One of the other pieces is that I would hope if we were to follow that route, that we could, excuse me, consider negotiating with the county for a future opportunity to co-locate the Municipal Court with the new municipal, or state courts down on the current city hall block. And I think to get some efficiencies there, it might behoove us to investigate whether or not there's an opportunity to co-locate the Municipal Court there. I would also hope if they're going to build any kind of facilities for holding folks in advance of trial, that we'd even, maybe even ask them what a few municipal jail beds would cost being built there, too. But that's just a hope of mine, I suppose. You mentioned the Woolworth Building, several others in downtown there. As I recall, when that was built, we had some manner of financial leverage and help in the process of a guarantee of some nature with regard to leasing. Can you tell me what the conditions or the status of that are? Are we still within that need of a guarantee? Are we responsible for that at this point, or has that date passed?
Bring up an expert.
We still have some liability on that guarantee, but it's pretty small, because the building's full. And if you recall, we used our kind of guaranteed lease to help them finance the project, and then as the building filled up, our liability went down. I believe, and I don't know this for sure, but I would think our, I think our annual exposure right now is about $40,000. Originally, it was probably $300,000 plus. So it's gone down significantly, because the building's full.
Would we leave them in the lurch with the downtown, in the, in the position it's in, in development right now? Would leaving the Woolworth Building leave their owners in the lurch or in a bad position for the, for the success of our downtown?
Only until they filled the space with someone else, probably. I mean, it's a whole floor. I mean, it would affect, obviously.
You do work with a lot of folks doing a lot of economic development downtown. I'm asking for your analysis.
You know, I would say it'd be easier to fill the space today than when they built the building, because there was more vacancy downtown. Right now, there's pretty low commercial vacancy rate, but it would take them time to absorb all of that whole floor, because it probably wouldn't be one tenant, probably have to break up the space.
We have a couple of years we're planning for here. Do you think that's adequate, just as a rough guess?
Well, at this point, we're committed to, I think Sarah said, 2022. I think we signed a 10-year lease, so we would be obligated to pay that even if we moved, because it's a 10-year lease. So we would be looking at moving after that. So you're asking me, really, how can they, how can they fill the space in 2022? Who knows? It's hard to say.
Thank you very much. In a recent thing that I was a part of writing, we estimated costs for that, but I would, I would rather get from what you've put here, how much we spend outside of the city. I don't mind the idea of us staying on the fourth floor of the library till the library's ready to expand, kind of thing, because that's an interorganizational thing. But to outside organizations, if it's not easily discernible for me, looking at this sheet, if at the point on Wednesday, maybe we could get a, what do we pay other people? Thank you.
Alan, you're next.
Yeah, thanks for this chart and this information. I'm sure it wasn't easy to compile. Could we get a, a dollars per square foot for each of these spaces, at least, just, I know sometimes it changes reading the footnotes, but if we could add that into that, to see where it's at, that would be helpful for Wednesday. And I guess I'm not fully understanding the gray shaded area. If I, I may say it back to you and see if I got it right. The gray shaded area is stuff that we already, or buildings we already own, and we're basically paying rent to ourselves, so it's really an internal transfer. So if we moved, we wouldn't save that money, because we would just, it's still an internal transfer.
Yeah, it's actually not rent or lease, it's the cost of the operations of the fourth floor. So it's major maintenance, custodial, those kinds of things. So it's not utilities, yes.
I was talking about central services.
Right.
Oh, that's the, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
That's just, that's just the operating cost.
Yeah.
So you'd still have those operating costs if we moved those people out?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't save anything by those two lines, is that what that means?
Well, it means that if you move them someplace else, you'd probably have operational costs someplace else. And then if we occupied the fourth floor, we'd have those operational costs as well.
Yeah. So, and these are, these are gross costs, so these are the costs that it costs us to be in the space. So they're not net costs, so, meaning the space that we move into is not free. So there's a cost associated with that space. And really, what I wanted to see was a, I guess, estimate of net cost savings, because these are not the cost savings. You can't just say, we move out of the space and we save the cost, because we incur new costs. In some cases, that actually, the cost to move might be more, because these are relatively low rent space costs. So what I'm interested in is, if you moved from some of these spaces into a new space and had to pay for the debt service and the operating costs of that new space, is that going to be more or less than the space that we're in now?
Good question, so.
Because that's the real question. It's not just, we don't just save this money if we move.
Right.
For other costs.
Right.
There's only half equation.
Yeah, so I was talking with facility staff a little bit about, you know, what can we use as an estimate to figure out if we moved into new space, what would the cost for operations and maintenance be outside of utilities, right? I'll get to debt service in just a sec, a little bit, at least. And basically, as just a kind of an average rule of thumb, if you assume about $10 a square foot per year, per space, is just, is a relative guideline for the custodial operations maintenance that does not include utilities, though. But just give you a little bit of a ballpark there, if you wanted to think about it in those terms. With respect to, you know, bond, we've talked, is it okay, are there more lease-specific costs, or?
No, just general.
Okay. So you've had, you've received a lot of costing information about how much things are going to cost to build and whatnot, but one of the things that you've asked about is, how will we pay for it? What will, what will we do to fill the gap? And so you mentioned, Councilor Zalika, the option of a bond. And so just kind of as a thumbnail sketch, if you take into consideration a 5% interest rate, a 3% bond insurance, and a 20-year payback period, which aligns with our financial debt policy, for a $10 million bond, it would, the debt service on that annually would be about $850,000.
For a how much bond?
For 10 million. And for 40 million, for example, it'd be about $3.3 million. But, you know, just kind of give you a range of scale. The other thing I would say is, is that with respect to how we've been utilizing dollars and setting aside funds for the project, we've looked to a lot of one-time resources. In some cases, that has been taking capital maintenance dollars and utilizing them to plan for the funding of the new city hall space development. And in addition, other things like sale of property, and there will be other options available for one-time resources, potentially, if there's any sort of ability to leverage property that we have today that might, might in the future be of value to somebody else, and think about it in that. In addition, the other thing I would say is, is that we've done a really good job with capturing the dollars that council had approved for the Phase 1 city hall and have dollars that are available. Obviously, some of those dollars have been spent and invested in the city hall site in terms of design and whatnot, but there are still dollars available to leverage going into the future. But I hope that answers a little bit of your question. I know one of the questions that we get asked a lot about is, if we leveraged more capital fund dollars, dollars that we use to maintain our facilities, what kinds of things might be impacted by that? And so facility staff have, you know, taken a look at that. And one of the key things, I guess I would say, is it would result in a little bit of a change in philosophy. We generally are very proactive in looking for long-term solutions, replacing systems that have long life cycles and lower costs for not only maintaining, but for operations. And we'd probably, with less dollars available in the capital fund, have fewer dollars available to do the planning for those replacements of those systems, and probably be more in, you know, kind of a day-to-day crisis mode in terms of fixing things or just in time fixing and repairing. Building systems replacement that would be negatively affected might be things like roofs, HVAC system, back power systems to be replaced less frequently and would require more operations and maintenance from city staff. The reliability, as you kind of let systems age out, would be reduced over time with less capital dollars to continue to reinvest. Things like just planning for facility upgrades and things like that would be impacted with dollars that we have available. And enhancement projects, things that are, would, you know, kind of improvements to existing facilities, remodels, things like that, would be significantly impacted as we kept the critical systems operational for longer periods of times. But it would just be a range of things, but I know that that question has come up quite a bit, and wanted to provide at least some scope or range of things that we might not be able to do.
So if we were to phase in, say we moved in E-Web and moved the first floor, and we're to phase into 2, 3, 4 North Building, over, say, a five-to-10-year period, we would be using capital dollars that we would use to do other projects and planning and replacement and retrofit and upgrades, that we would forego doing those things to, to phase in the build-out of city hall.
That would be one of the options.
Right? So we would forego all those other things. I guess I don't have a real clear grasp of what those other things are. I know what you just said.
Yeah.
But it's not very real for me, so maybe on Wednesday, you could think about that a little bit more and come back to us.
Okay.
But just finally, on, on this chart, were we able to get gross, gross numbers? I mean, net numbers?
On the.
On the rent?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I've got George Brown and Chris in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a couple more questions about this spreadsheet thing here, just because I don't understand this part of it. So, you know, we're looking at the shaded gray areas, and that's basically the library, the fourth floor. And so we see those monetary, the many figures are, that is pretty much maintenance and utility, stuff like that. Then we look at the other city-owned building, the atrium, but part of those figures are a lease payment, and I'm not understanding why we're charging ourselves the lease payment for the atrium.
It's the same.
I thought it was paid off a zillion years ago.
It's the same, it's not completely paid off, and it's the same, it may be getting paid off this year, but it's the same factor that we do at the library. We still have to pay for major maintenance, operations, custodial, so we charge everybody in the building a lease rate.
Okay, that I understand. I mean, because, because that's, I get the, I get the utilities, a part of it, and maintenance, but I was wondering about the lease payment. So that was an urban renewal project, I recall, and I just thought it was paid off.
No.
We're still, okay, so part of this payment would be bond interest payments and principal. I see. Okay. All right. Then my other, my last question for now is, if we go down Central Services Municipal Court, footnote number seven, I look down there, and it says, "Monthly lease rate includes property tax exemption." And I guess I was not aware that, did the Roberts, the company that owns the building, did they, they, I don't recall that they got a property tax exemption. Could you just explain what that means?
Well, as a, any privately-owned property can apply for an exemption if they are leasing space to a, to a tax-exempt organization, and I'm assuming that that's what they did.
I see. Okay, I don't, I don't remember. Maybe it's just me, I don't remember that mention of that when we were discussing moving it over there.
Well, it's not, it's not something that the council approves, it's just automatic. So, for example, we own parking garages. When we lease those to a private entity, then property tax is paid on that portion, even though we don't, as the city, pay property tax. The reverse is also true. If we lease space in a private building, then property tax is in ode on that part. And so this is, I believe, saying that for the part of that building that we are leasing, there isn't property tax being paid, and so that's taken into account in what our lease payment is.
So, yeah, if, so we're not paying property tax?
Correct.
Yeah, and if we were, it would be higher, of course, monthly payment. Okay, thank you, that, I should understand how that works.
Yeah, Councilor Brown asked the primary question I was going to ask about the atrium building, since we own it. So that then leads to a second question. If we were to move out of the atrium building, we would still be obligant, obligated to continue to make payments on the building?
We would, we would pay it off when we moved out and sold it, yeah.
Okay, we would, okay, but we would sell the building or vacate it or pay it off or whatever, so that, that money that we're paying now would no longer need to be paid.
I think the one piece is, is that, that payment also includes utilities and man- I think the one piece is, is that, that payment also includes utilities and maintenance. So it may not pay there, but if they move to another location, presumably, maintenance and utilities is still required at a new location. It may be the same, it may be different. And so the, so some of it may be freed up to spend on anything or it just may transfer to some other facility for similar kinds of costs.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to get at is if we picked up and moved out, how much money could pick up and move out with us? And how much money would have to remain behind? And it sounds like some amount to pay off a bond or, or close out an account or something like that would still need to be there. But it wouldn't be a continuous stream of money, it would just be for a set period of time. Okay. That was my, that was my main question. Thanks.
Greg?
Can we get some analysis by Wednesday? And, and I don't know how complicated this would be, is what would the impact of each of our four options be on A, deferred maintenance of existing facilities? And B, replacement of other facilities in the capital piece of the budget? Because what I'm looking at now is pressures on swimming pools, community centers. You know, we have existing infrastructure that is crumbling and other parts of the system that's crumbling. And so, you know, I like to see what those impacts are specifically. And that would help better frame what my response is as we, you know, kind of move forward with this. Because I think that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about. What I hear, you know, most residents talking to me about is what's going to be, you know, you know, when are we going to get, get a new pool? When are we going to get roofs on this? What other pieces of the infrastructure that we need to, you know, either upgrade or replace that are going to be impacted? And so we need to go with what the best option is. And I think that that's, you know, where I'd like to see us end up landing, if that's where we're going to land on something, is to get the best option that has the least amount of adverse impact on our future budgets as we move down the line with replacement and deferred maintenance.
I want to ask one clarifying question to that. And that's really around, when you said on all scenarios, previously, council has said you really want to focus in on the Phase 1 piece and not so much detail on Phase 2 because you learned that it was feasible in any of the locations. Are you asking us what the cost is of Phase 1 in all the four scenarios? The apples-to-apples, $25,000?
Yeah, just the Phase 1 piece.
In the first floor of the E-Web building?
Yeah, the Fa, the Phase 1 piece. Because, you know, we, the, the likelihood that we get out to Phase 2 might be prohibitive. It depends on, on what things look like in out years on future budgets, so.
And then I guess one, my last question about that would be, are we using the assumption of the Robertson Sherwood analysis that we brought you tonight? Is that, that's what we would be using? I know that there's conflicting information, so I would want to
What you've given us tonight, that's, that's something I'd like to see what that, what that comparison really looks like.
I've got Mike and Alan, and then we'll try to move on to the cost-funding part of the presentation.
Can I get in the queue, Mayor?
Sure, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thank you. So just some food for thought in terms of this phasing. And I appreciate the math and the assistant city manager walking us through how we might move out of some of these buildings. And I wonder if there's any value or utility in considering if we do move into whichever Phase 1 we end up choosing in a timely fashion, taking the public works out of Parkview Place and Wells Fargo and relocating them into some of the city-owned spaces that would be vacated in that process. So I know our original City Hall idea of the, the fourth floor would be for public works to move in there eventually. But I just wanted to put that out there. There doesn't seem to be any conversation around further consolidation once some of the city functions have moved into a Phase 1. And I, so I don't necessarily need an answer to that. I just wanted to put that out there as another thought.
Good point. Okay, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. When you, I want to clarify in on what Greg was asking there because I want to make sure I understood him correctly. Could you repeat what you understood him to ask with that? When you were trying to clarify whose numbers to use?
I thought that I was understanding that you wanted to know the impact of that Phase 1 funding for all four scenarios on future other capital maintenance items like fixing pools and other items. You wanted to know what kind of the impact of that was. And so for me, I need to understand whether we're talking about the 25,000 square feet at E-Web at the, as estimated by the consultant that we hired or whether I'm estimating it at a different number than that.
The apples-to-apples comparison.
The reason I say that, the reason I ask that question is because there's some significant difference there. And, and I would hope that when we get to a decision, we have some, if not some, and, and even speaking, their information was based on a limited time to prepare and it was based on a limited amount of information from E-Web in the first place. So now that we've got fuller details, I would hope that we'll get more accurate information as we go towards a decision. Secondarily, what's the, what's the market value roughly, just broadly, of the atrium building?
I'm not certain what that is. And that might be something we want to talk about in executive session.
Okay. How many square feet in it?
40,000.
40,000 square feet. Well, the reason I ask that
I don't remember what the total, I think it's 40. Yeah.
I would hope that when we're doing these calculations, we do both sides of the calculation. In other words, we no longer have CIP maintenance needs if we don't own the atrium building and we sell it. So we're now saving money. When we, when, if we moved into E-Web and fully at some point and emptied the atrium building, then we would sell it, right?
Correct.
So the revenue that we would have, we would no longer have the capital maintenance of that building that would save money on what other, whatever projects are planned out to do that. But we would also have the sale proceeds from the building. And one of the things we've mentioned in, in a couple of these scenarios of selling the current City Hall lot and then even adding to that whatever the atrium building might net, could be a substantial amount of money that could be applied towards the costs of that move into E-Web. So I would hope that what we're going to get at the end of the day would be net numbers for the plan rather than, because I think that's more of an apples-to-apples comparison.
I just want to make sure. So are you, the sale of the atrium is not contemplated in either a Phase 1 or Phase 1 Plus? Because the people in the atrium, with the, with the exception of the portion that's currently in the city manager's office, would still stay in the atrium. So if, with a, with the E-Web Plus scenario, Phase 1 Plus, all the planning and building staff would not be moving. So it would be a Phase 2?
I, I'm sorry, with 100,000 square feet at E-Web open and available?
No, so I think if you take a look at the leased spaces, 100,000 square feet at E-Web would account our current Phase 1 that we talk about, the fourth floor of the library, and the, and the folks that sit in the Woolworth Building. Essentially, is that 100,000 square feet.
We've looked at this before, that you can't get Public Works and PDD, Building Permit Services, all in there and all of the, you can't get all the functions. The second building would need to be constructed to get, to get all the functions. But we can, go ahead.
Yeah, you can get Public Works and planning without all the other functions in that Phase 1 Plus E-Web. So you're just mixing and matching, but you can't get all of that in?
No, I understood what you're saying. I'm, I'm hoping that we have some flexibility to think through this over time. Hoping we have that available opportunity. Thank you.
I have Alan in the queue, but Betty hasn't had a turn. I'm going to stick her in here right now.
Thank you. I think when you talk about comparing costs, we'd have no idea how much it would cost to construct a city council chamber in the Web building, do we?
We know what the cost is under the scenario that we brought you tonight, which would be remodeling a portion of the first floor of the South Building into a, like, you know, size, but lower height ceiling.
Not a real council chamber.
Not like this one.
I mean, if we really wanted a council chamber, we really, we don't have that cost at all. And also, if we're talking about selling the old City Hall site, if we, I wonder who we think would buy it if the county wants it, if, if we are not trading it to the county for the better, part of the butterfly lot or doing some sort of trade? Who would buy that? And what would that do to the county's plan for a courthouse eventually? That's something we should be thinking about. And it's not just as if that's property we can just give away. And, well, of course, I think, to me, it's, the E-Web site is totally out as far as I'm concerned. But I think there are a lot of things to consider besides just thinking we can trade that lot over there. We're, a part of why we're talking about all this is that the county wants that lot for a courthouse. And I don't know who else wants it right now or what we would be doing to downtown if we don't do, don't plan ahead for that and for the butterfly lot and for the farmer's market. Thank you.
Alan?
So I guess Clara's question's a good one. In, in the consolidation, you would move people into city-owned facilities because it would be ostensibly cheaper to do that. And so you wouldn't vacate the atrium building. You'd probably vacate some of those other places like what Clara was saying and fill in places that people left to go to the new City Hall, wherever it would be. I get Greg's question's a good one, but the E-Web scenario is different in that it's the only one of the scenarios that actually creates a, an obligation for a Phase 2. The other ones have Phase 2 as someday. With the E-Web building, you have floors 2, 3, and 4 in the North Building that would be mothballed, basically. And we'd have, we would have this, we wouldn't just let it sit there and be mothballed. We'd have this obligation to start to phase it in. And so, so it's different than the other ones in that those, that then becomes an obligation for us to then create those spaces over time. And I guess that leads me back to my previous question, which was, so if we start to do that phase in of those floors 2, 3, 4 and the North Building, what are we not going to do because we're doing that? Because that, that gets us to that $60 million number over, over a five- or 10-year period that we would phase it in. And so that's an interesting question to me. So if we're starting to then, everything gets, all of our capital improvement projects become City Hall, then we're not doing other stuff. And I guess I want to know what that other stuff is that we wouldn't do.
So the only comment I wanted to make, because I heard what you said about the atrium building will be essentially stay full with some of the city manager's office moving in the case of that E-Web scenario. But you could, if you had, with, under the lease that you have for the Woolworth Building, you could potentially move and then move some people who are in other buildings in to fill out that lease contract.
That's true.
Yeah. Just a, okay. So we're going to move on now to the cost and funding part of this?
We kind of already covered that. Thank you.
I thought you'd pretty much done that. Okay, do you want, do you need an executive session?
I don't, I don't think we do.
No, not, not tonight.
Not tonight? Okay. So now we're at the part of this that we're going to have discussion of scenarios. Looking around and see if anybody has more comments they want to make? Don't see anybody has, yes, Mike?
Hey. I hear Alan's question and I, I recognize the importance of it. I would dispute the $60 million number dramatically based on what we've learned. I think that the, what we need to do perhaps is drill down a little bit more on that, not just assume of that very large number, but what other manner might we make the space available for, in all of the space of that E-Web building? And how could we do so in an inexpensive fashion that we might afford? Would be a better question for the, for the phases, between Phase 1 and Phase 2 discussions that keep changing here. I'm not sure how, what to call it. But in the, in the remodeling and use of the other 75,000 square feet, I don't think that's a $60 million cost that would forego other city capital opportunities to spend money. So I, I would wonder what some of our other options might be for how to utilize that space in an affordable fashion? And especially with other, perhaps, unyet discussed revenues that the city might come across in that timeframe as well. Thank you.
I just want to, I really want to be able to provide you with exactly what you want. My tension that I'm feeling is that the direction that we received by motion from the council was to factor the E-Web in at those, at the lead gold, EUI 30. And so all of the, all of the information that we've been given to date is at that. If, if the full, if you want us all to bring you back the lowest-cost scenario that doesn't do that, I think we could, we could work to do that. But it's, it's, everything we have to date that is the information we have tonight is, is at the apples-to-apples.
And I guess I would add to that. If you want something different that council hasn't come to agreement on and you need to put it out there and ask so that people can tell you if they support it or not.
Thank you, Mayor.
The, the other piece for me is when I look at the leased spaces that across town and I think about some of them moving to E-Web and others staying behind, the distance of our employees to the place, to the, to the city manager's office grows much wider. So instead of consolidating, we're creating in some ways a much bigger distance between a number of our employees and where, and the city manager's office.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, so if you, so right now, you're basically two blocks away from another building, maybe four at the most if you're in the atrium building going to the old City Hall site.
I'll get to your mic.
And then if, so then if we were to go up to the E-Web site on the periphery of downtown, then you're adding, from the atrium building all the way to there, it's not a very walkable distance. It's certainly doable. But it certainly spreads out the city even more. And I guess I'd like you guys to think about that and what, how that might impact the way you do business. Right now, you, you could schedule a meeting in any one of the buildings and people can just show up. And so would that just mean that people would have more time, they'd have to schedule more time to get there? Or maybe they would drive or, how would that work?
We, I measured the, a couple of different ways from the atrium building. I was trying to get a sense of that. If you walked across there and you cut up and you cost, the way I would walk, cut across Kezey Square, cut across park blocks, back over, it's about .8, a little over .8 miles from the atrium.
Oh, .8 into the old City Hall site? Point four or so?
Yeah.
The, the other question I had about E-Web is, so the E-Web building was built for the functionality of the utility. And the functionality of the City Hall is pretty different. And so it wasn't meant to be a building that was going to have a lot of activity in it that's community-oriented, meaning meetings and building and, and community center kind of things. So if we were to redo the first floor, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do you squeeze in the city council chambers and all those other things and, and have it still have that kind of functionality? Because we're trying to squeeze a new function into an existing building as opposed to a new building where you would create it, which would obviously be a better way to do it. But there's a trade-off. And then you can think about and address that issue as well.
Okay, I guess we're going to then continue this conversation on Wednesday. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. We'll be back at 7:30.